Twenty six o'clock P M. This is the workshop meeting Lamarck City Council. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
You're muted, Robin.
Oh, my gosh. Councilmember District A.
President.
Councilmember District D. Councilmember District C.
Here.
Councilmember District D.
Here.
And Mayor.
I am here. Item three, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item three is citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public. At this time, any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council on a specific agenda item, limited to three minutes. In compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Kyle, I'll open up the floor for anyone wishing to comment.
Lois Carolock is here to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have several concerns to bring to you this evening. The first is regarding an item on the workshop agenda, item six B. I'm curious to know what kind of business will be locating at this seven fourteen Bayou Road. From what I've seen on that property recently, I'm hoping that it's not going to be a place to store or collect junk cars. I know you can't answer me right now, but I would like to know an answer to that, please. The other concerns are not on the workshop agenda, but I feel the need to address them. I've tried to contact the city manager by email and by telephone for several months now, and for some reason, he chooses not to communicate with me, and I would like to know why. And I feel like it's part of his job to communicate with the residents of Lamarck. And since he has not communicated with me, I reached out to one of the council persons in whose district one of the problems is located. To date, I haven't heard back from her, and to date, the problem has not been resolved. One other thing is I'm curious when you plan to reopen City Hall. There are a lot of people questioning that, and I just thought I would present that to you. And I thank you for your time. Hopefully, I'll have some communication with the city manager soon to discuss some of the issues with him. And I would also hope that in the future, he'll be willing to be more accessible to the residents of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else do we have?
This is Don Johnson. I'd like to speak about the Harris-Gallston Subsidence District appointment, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Well, I guess I'm really here to say my background and experience uniquely qualifies me to represent the cities of Galveston County on the Harris-Gallston Subsidence District Board. I was a director at the Clear Lake City Water Authority. This is a public system that operates groundwater wells and is a partner in the Southeast Houston Surface Water Plant. It also operates a sewer system with list stations feeding a major sewer plant. As the Subsidence District regulates municipal water systems, my background with the Clear Lake City Water Authority uniquely qualifies me to address the regulation policies of the Subsidence District. Also, I've been involved in flood reduction projects for approximately twenty years. This includes participating with the Army Corps of Engineers General Revaluation Review Project. Of course, the goals of the Subsidence District are directly linked to flood reduction, and having a background in projects like this is very helpful. Currently, I've been participating with the Bay Area-Houston Economic Partnership Team, supporting the Army Coastal Spine Barrier Plan. I've been a director at the Subsidence District for eight years, four years representing the Galveston County and four years representing cities of Galveston County. Currently, my term of service on the Subsidence District Board surpasses either of the city's appointees currently on the Subsidence District Board. There have been many accomplishments that were initiated while I was on the board. This includes increasing transparency and public input opportunities, helping the Galveston County cities collect refunds for unused water authorization, conservation initiatives, and research projects. Also, while I was on the board, I was a staunch fiscal conservative, one of the few board members that consistently opposed unnecessary expenditures and holding the line on fee increases. There was so much done during my tenure, the time does not allow me to go into extensive detail about these instances. I will say my background experience and achievements clearly surpasses the other individuals that you've been asked to consider. In a close book two years ago, the appointment process for this position was nothing like I've ever seen before. A couple of county officials were ordering off city officials to appoint a campaign worker that had little to no experience or background that qualified him for the job. Remarkably, one mayor ignored a unanimous vote of council and instead sent an appointment for the unqualified campaign worker in. As if this didn't look bad enough, the mayor's engineering company was given a lucrative county contract a few weeks after he ceded to the county officials' demands. Many voters think appointments like this should be given to the most qualified and capable people, and such should be asked to act in the best interest of the public. Indeed, the voters noticed this mayor did not do that, and it was not too surprising when he lost his reelection at the next voting opportunity. I hope this appointment process will not get bogged down in politics, and officials from Lamarck will be able to base their decision on who is the most qualified candidate for a position on the Harris-Gallston Subsidence District Board. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, sir. I believe that appointment is due in February, by February, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, February first.
And that's a mayoral appointment, I believe.
It is a mayoral appointment. Some of the mayors do allow the councils to participate with them. It's your choice, you know, whether you want to allow them to do that.
Certainly, I certainly would welcome my council participating. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else signed up to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Kyle, do you have anybody queued up?
No, there's a few people on, but if you're wishing to speak, then now is the time to bring it up. They might just be absorbing, watching the meeting.
I think so. Here, no one else. Item four, consent. Mr. Jackson, take over the workshop, please, sir.
Think you're muted.
Robin's starting to wear off on me. Good evening, Mayor, Council. The first item on the agenda for the workshop tonight is discussion relating to accepting the quarter investment reports for the third quarter of 2020. Susie was having some technical difficulties a while ago. I think we may have her on my phone. Susie, are you there? Okay, maybe she was not able to get on. The quarter investment report is in your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer your questions. There's no, no questions on that item. The next item is item five A. That is discussion possible action regarding Galveston County invoices for COVID-19 testing in the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents. The reason I put this back on the agenda was to make sure the council knows that Galveston County is continuing to send us invoices. We've now received three additional, or two or three additional invoices from them for COVID testing. It's simply a one-page invoice that says that they did this many tests in the city of Lamarck, and they expect us to pay X amount of money related to those tests. I spoke with the county about our original decision on this and about some of the concerns we had about the way that the billing was submitted, and it didn't change anything about the way they were submitting billing for us to consider this. So I, the reason I put on the agenda was strictly so that you guys would stay informed, so you guys would know that we are continuing to receive, receive billing from the county and to try to answer any additional questions you guys may have related to this. So any questions on item five A?
Sorry.
Okay, Casey.
I ask, I, I think you just said it, but to clarify, there was no, any of the questions we asked at the last round have not been answered.
No addresses or anything, just the number that says we did X number of people in the Mark period. I mean, we want this much money.
And I believe you cleared up for us at the last meeting that we, I believe we were on target or had already spent our full cares allotment at that point.
Okay, so, yeah, so let's, let's talk about that a little bit. So we had, we had submitted in excess, an amount of expenditures that were in excess of the allotment that we received. Susie has received some guidance from the state based on some of the items that we had submitted, and based on some of those items that we had submitted, we had exceeded the allowable amounts for certain categories underneath the act. For instance, the small business grants that we did through the EDC that we had submitted for reimbursement, we had exceeded the allowable amount that we could do for that type of activity. So we won't be receiving full reimbursement for that. It'll be partial reimbursement for that. So there is potential, I guess there's potentially money left in our original cares allotment or money in our original cares allotment, the nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that we, that we may not have reached at this point. Therein lies another problem with this. For us to submit something for reimbursement, it has to be something we've already paid. So we can't submit a bill on behalf of somebody else. We can't submit a theoretical payment that we're going to make. It has to be a payment that we have made. So if we were going to try to recover any of this, we would have to, we would have to pay the county that invoice. We would have to submit the invoice and the council check showing that we had already paid it. I guarantee you, those invoices, they're not gonna, there's not enough information behind those invoices for us to get reimbursed for the payments, because there's no clarifying information that goes with them. And as you, as you will, especially know, when it comes to getting reimbursement on grants, they're pretty particular in what information goes behind that request for reimbursement. So the invoices that we have at this point, I do not believe will be sufficient for reimbursement.
So, so Tink. Tink, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir, I can.
So I'm curious, and I want you to help me get this straight, because it's, the way it's playing in my mind is, I want to make sure that I'm not crazy. So, um, the federal government gave the county money to go towards COVID relief, yes?
Correct.
So then they used the money toward COVID relief, and they were to submit what they used the money for to the federal government, right?
Correct.
So this money did not generate from county coffers. It was generated from the federal government, correct?
The, the, the allotment they got, just like the allotment that we got, came from, yes, it came from the federal government, it didn't come from the county.
So they use, and this is where I'm, I'm confused. So they use money that came from the federal government to do their testing, yes or no?
Yes, and I, but I would add, what they, what they're saying is that they've not only used that money, but they have money that they've spent in excess of that on testing and running the health department and all those other things that the allotment that they got from the federal government didn't cover all the expenses.
Okay, that, that, that's fine, but, but they were given resources from the federal government.
Correct.
And, and, and so, again, I'm not, it's almost like, and then you want us to reimburse you or fulfill this invoice based on testing that you did on our residents. But again, there was money that was given to the county by the federal government, and at least half of that money, we still don't know what they have used that for. So while, you know, I respect the county, and I respect their, their, their rights and their ability to invoice, it seems to me that there's nothing here for us to even entertain. There was money given to them to serve the community. They served the community, and now they seek to invoice us for having served the community with money that were dispersed to them through the federal government. So I don't follow that, that logic. And so, again, I appreciate their right to reimburse, to ask for reimbursement and to invoice, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we ought to be inclined to do anything in any way that would facilitate that.
One, one, one point that I want to make sure that, we talked about this before, I want to make sure that, because this is going to be their argument to your comment, is when the dispersments were made, it was made based on population. So we were given an amount out of the CARES Act based on our 2015 census in Lamarck. They were given an amount based on their census for unincorporated areas. So they were not given an amount to cover the entire population of the county. Their dispersal was based on populations in unincorporated areas. Ours was based on our population. Texas Cities was based on their population. League Cities on their population. Everybody received that. My argument, and what we talked about before, of course, is, you know, but we all pay county taxes, and, and, and we have a lot of people who pay county taxes who don't see, you know, who we, we may have a little eighty-year-old lady said someplace that's never really seen any benefit from that, who's been paying taxes her whole life. And now she goes and gets one COVID test, and they want reimbursement for it. That's, that's my, my, my issue with this.
So, 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 so now, so now we're asked to, and I know you're not, I'm just saying this. So now we're asked to then make up the amount of resources that were expended to our citizens, even though the federal government expended resources to them so that they might care for citizens that are in unincorporated parts of our county. We didn't ask them to test our citizens. We were allotted resources to test our own citizens. They chose to do something with federal resources that, that, that the federal government did not indicate was part of the purview for them to use those resources. That's, that's not, that's not on us. And so, again, I appreciate their ability to invoice, and I understand where they're coming from. But as far as I'm concerned, you know, there ought not be any action.
I agree. Any other questions on item number five A?
Tink, just one more thing on their, their charge at a hundred dollars of the CARES Act. You know, the lab corp tests, everything was set at fifty-five dollars a test.
That is correct.
They set those numbers so that they would not be impugned. They would make money. But yet, UTMB, who is doing this, has chosen to bill at a hundred dollars. So I think there's a little bit of a problem there also.
I would agree with that assessment as well.
I only have one last, and that is that when they inevitably come back, or whenever you, you know, respond to them after this round, I would just reiterate that I would absolutely entertain the idea of working with, with the county on what are the proactive plans that are going to be in place to not only fund the inevitable continuation of treatment and testing, but I, we have to have more information from them about what their plans are. Like, what are their fiscal plans? What is, you know, what's the map look like when they look at 2021? Because this, this method gives us no information and asks us to trust a whole hell of a lot with no detail, and that makes me uncomfortable when it comes to the city's money.
Well, you know, when you talk about the bill, when you talk about the billing portion of it, there are a lot of individuals that have a Lamarck mailing address that don't live in Lamarck. So if it's based on a mailing address, that's not what we need. You know, if they, if we're gonna, if they, if we're gonna cover the program where cities are gonna pay for each citizen that gets tested, it needs to be based on physical address and not mailing address. Because we have people, you know, jump around all the time, or they, you know, they're, they're the younger generation, they still keep mom and dad's address because that's a permanent address. And that doesn't necessarily mean they're from Lamarck. We have, Partagalo Mar has a Lamarck mailing address. Parts of West Texas City have a Lamarck zip code. I mean, you know, there's, the, the, the post office doesn't break down their, their, their regions by our political boundaries. They have their own boundaries and their own zip code boundaries, and sometimes they don't add up. And so, you know, there's some other issues there that need to be figured out as well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get to a point down the road where we all try to work together on this. Anything else on five A? Item six A, discussion relating to approving final plat for mainland partial replat number one, located near six oh one Delaney Road, Lamarck, Texas. And if you have any questions, I'll let Dara answer those questions. Item number six B, discussion relating to adopting ordinance number oh dash twenty twenty dash zero zero two one, changing the zoning district for a property out on air seven fourteen Bayou Road from C two restricted commercial to C one general commercial. Any questions?
Uh, yeah.
Back to what Ms. Carolock had asked.
Yeah.
Business was that.
Dara?
So we did get an application for a zone change from a gentleman who was bringing his business from another city to the city of Lamarck. He has already purchased that property, as we're understanding. One part of the business is supposed to be retail sales of car parts, and the other part of the business is the mechanic side where they would be working on cars. Effectively, it's a hot rod shop. To the, the questions that were asked, we certainly don't want it to become storage for junk cars either. We've already been working on the owner to lower the number that is there. He's also been in contact with code compliance, and we do have a permit request to go ahead and install opaque fencing around the back area where the cars that are waiting to be worked on are stored. Right now, the owner is not authorized to do any of that mechanic's work because it is a C two zone. Unless the zone change is final, the owner is not authorized to start doing the mechanic side of the business, which is only authorized in a C one zoning district. There is a C one zoning nearby. There's also, to the extent, there's a lineup of this with any of the R one single-family zoning, the supplementary district regulations kick in, and he asked to install that opaque fencing. There is also been notification, just because when you hear the word hot rod, it worries you a little bit. We have made him aware of the city's noise ordinance, and he is very familiar with how actively we try to enforce those things, since he's, I think, met with code compliance several times now.
So, Dara.
Yes, sir.
I think the major concern for our community is the noise ordinance issue, especially when you're talking about the mechanic shop outside, in the back, when, when they, they'd be obviously repairing those, those vehicles, and at some point, they're gonna have to start them up. At some point, they're gonna have to check however that happened with hot rods. And that's going to be, I anticipate, very loud and very consistent. And so when you say they're aware of the noise ordinance, what does that, what does that mean to them, and what do they plan on, on doing about this potential ordinance violation?
So, Mayor Pro Tim, that would be something that the applicant would have to speak to. I don't know that the applicant is, is on here tonight, but that would be something they, they would have to speak to. The best we can do is just point out that the noise ordinance exists. I would say, just playing devil's advocate a little bit, that if you had a hot rod at a residential neighborhood, you could technically still do that as long as you didn't violate the noise ordinance by doing it in a way that rose to the level of being public nuisance. So a business like this, theoretically, they've been in another city for quite some time. They left because my understanding is their lease ran out, and they could buy cheaper here than they could renew the lease there. So, you know, I think this is something they're at least used to dealing with. But as far as giving assurances of what will or will not be done, I don't know that there's anything I can say to that effect. It's more a question for council whether you think it's an appropriate use in that particular area to go ahead and turn it into C one to match some of the surrounding zoning district, or if you don't.
Thank you.
Derek, could you give us a little bit, real quick, just to tell the, the surrounding properties? Mostly C one. What's, how far is it to the closest residential property?
Let me look. So this is actually, in, in your packet, you can kind of see it. So there is, it's a very large property that goes all the way through to the other side of the street. The existing building is actually on the Bayou side. And so to one side is all C one property, and across the street is C one property. And then you've got, on the other side is C two. That's actually Alex's Air Conditioning. So in a lot of ways, kind of similar businesses, it just happened that this property was still C two. I actually think it's C two because of its proximity to kind of the downtown area where we were doing revitalization. So it looks like that whole area was, was established as the C two zoning district. The R one is basically on either side of the back portion of the property. There's been some talk of subdividing that, that property so that the back part could then be turned back into R one and potentially have a, a house built on it. That's all we've heard about, you know, potential future plans. I will say that if the zoning district is, is changed for this property, nothing else could really go in that back area besides, you know, the existing zoning district. They, they can't go in and try to do, let's say, duplexes, because we, we couldn't spot zone that to R two.
Any additional questions from council on this one?
And there was no feedback after the, you know, requisite letters were sent out?
We haven't heard any, any comments from anyone. We have no, no public comments, except for the one we heard, we heard tonight. And my understanding is that she's not an adjacent property owner. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Dara.
Any other questions on item six B? Seeing none, moving on. Item six C, discussion relating to adopting resolution R twenty twenty dash zero zero twenty-three, TCAP's professional services agreement and G X A Energy's commercial electric service agreement for power to be provided on and after January first, twenty twenty-three. I do believe we have Susie connected now. So Susie, you want to talk about this? Susie, are you there? Derek, you want to talk about this one?
I will do my best. So in effect, I think TCAP is doing contracts much longer term than they used to. It's, it's helping with procurement strategies. To do that, they've asked for this one, which starts, I believe, in January of twenty twenty-three. It sounds like one of the things they're doing is putting together these bigger coalitions to try to get more effective energy rates for local governments and anybody who's part of the TCAP process. I can't tell you too much about the numbers off the top of my head, but I will say in reviewing the, the contract some time ago, it looked fairly similar to the one we were in previously.
And it does lead to, and I do know it does lead to a reduction in our, in our electoral costs. Susie, did you ever get this? Did you ever get on? Okay, she's, I guess she's still having technical difficulties. Any questions from council on this? Any comments? We can always see if we can get her connected. She's. She's dealing with a sick family member and trying to do that and help us at the same time.
Yeah, Tink, I think if she gets connected by the regular meeting, that'll be fine. If not, we'll go forward.
Okay. Item six D, discussion relating to approval of diversity promotion language for use in city contracts and procurement documents. I have Councilwoman McCullough listed on this. If you all will remember, we, we discussed this a while back in, in some of the council meetings, and we came up with a draft, some draft language, which is attached in your, your council agenda form, that we will make, that if approved, we'll make standard language on all of our contracts or any bids or proposals that we, that we put out. I think Councilwoman McCullough, if you have something you want to say about this one?
Well, I'm, I'm glad it's here. And the only, there's one tweak I would like to add, and that is if, if the phrase can be diversity and inclusion wherever possible. So it's not just, the emphasis is not just on diversity, but inclusivity as well.
So after the word diversity, every place is stated, add inclusion? Would you be fine with diversity, diversity slash inclusion for each one of those? Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? If there's no other questions or comments on that item, we'll move on to the last item, which is item six E. As you all saw, attached in your packet, Judge Baker has announced that he will be retiring effective December thirty first. As you all saw attached in your packet, uh Judge Ma- Judge Baker has announced that he will be retiring effective uh December thirty first. Um, so we need to have a a brief discussion about what we want to do as far as moving forward with the new municipal court judge. We have a uh, an alternate judge who will be able to help us. Um, if, in the meantime, if we can't come up with a with a a quick solution to this, I spent some time talking to Dara about this, uh, so we would at least be able to um to be able to give you some idea of what what would be recommended. And our recommendation is that you would one accept, of course, accept his resignation and then authorize uh the city manager to post a request for qual qualifications to fill the position. Uh, we can get that out uh fairly quick and then hopefully uh by the January meeting, uh maybe have some some RFPs. We've already uh once uh, once uh Mr. Baker announced that he was gonna, he was going to retire, we've already had a lot of people reach out with interest about this. So I think we will have quite a few RFPs that we will see related to this uh from folks who are interested in serving as municipal court judge. Um, so if you have any questions or comments on that, I'd be happy to answer those at this point as well.
Um, think my my uh, my 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 only uh comment would be that I I think that this council needs to arrive at what we want the compensation to look like. I know that that it it looks differently in different years based on our our budgetary priorities and our ability to compensate our judge. So I think we should probably get that uh uh drilled down in the concrete. Uh, and secondly, I think that uh, obviously, I I really believe that uh the council needs to interview uh at least the top three applicants. I don't know how we get to three, uh, but I think that at some point, the council, even through Zoom, i- if need be, needs to interview those top three applicants so that we can be thoughtful and and deliberative in in how we go about selecting the new judge. So two things, number one, let's make sure that we all understand and agree with the salary and the compensation. And number two, let's drill down a uh process, which we would uh go from uh accepting uh 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 applications to naming a judge.
Derek, go ahead.
So if I could speak to that uh just a little bit, Mayor Pro Tim, so our charter actually um states that the municipal judge is recommended by the city manager and then actually hired by the city council. Um, so the uh reason the language is a little bit broad is that we may be required to hire an interim municipal judge in the meantime. If you authorize uh Mr. Jackson to hire the interim judge and then also to place the RFQ for the um permanent position, he would then recommend the um top three applicants, if that's council's choice. Um, and then you could go through that process at that point. So we do anticipate it might take um a little bit longer for council to decide how you want to handle everything for the permanent position. Um, so this authorization is to place the RFP as needed because we may also need that interim uh judge.
Cool. Just just so long. Yeah, ju- just so long, Derek, just so long as at the end of the day, uh, uh, I would really like think to recommend three folks and let the council talk to and and feel out and and interview those three persons so that it can, it could be our uh decision uh in a way that would provide some uh some transparency to to the community, so that it would be their choice as well.
Uh, you know, quite honestly, Mayor Pro Tim, what my what my vision would be of this would be, once we get those RFPs, if at least three, and if there's five that are extremely qualified, I mean, I think at that point, I'm just 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 verifying that they're qualified and sending them on to you uh for for you guys to pick who you want. But um, yeah, I I absolutely agree, that would be the best process.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so uh any other questions or comments on item six E? If there are no more mayor, we are finished with the workshop.
Thank you, sir, thank you, council. We will, uh, I'm assuming, Madam Clerk, everyone is still present?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you. We'll move into the regular meeting of Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, Lamarck City Council, call to order, item three, uh presentations, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor, Council, and everybody that is watching. Um, we are, because of the ever existing pandemic and the changes that we've had to make to everything uh this year, we also obviously had to make a change to our our annual Christmas gathering where we pass out awards and recognize our employees um who have reached service uh level uh requirements or who were nominated by their fellow employees and selected for our annual awards. Um, so I want to um be able to go through uh those tonight. You know, we still felt it was important to make sure that that um that we recognize them in some way, shape, form, or fashion. Uh, uh, so we decided the the to do it at the council meeting tonight. Uh, so I'm going to tell you all the people who received awards for the city um for this year and uh a little bit about each one of them, and we have a bunch of them who are either uh watching. Um, they they were um notified that they might want to watch the meeting tonight. So uh some of them um are watching, they don't know that they won an award, uh, but they're going to find out during the course of the meeting. So I want to, it's gonna take us a few minutes, but I think it's important that we make sure that we take a few minutes to recognize uh the people who have been here for a while or who uh who were who are recognized by their fellow employees uh for this year. So first, I'm gonna run through the five year award, through the service awards that we have for this year. Um, and the individuals we have that are receiving service awards. Uh, the five year uh service awards for this year, the first one they have is Evelyn Aradondo. Um, Evelyn's time with the law, during Evelyn's time with the law, Lamarck Police Department, she has served in both the Patrol Division and the Criminal Investigations Division. She currently serves as a detective in CID investigating sex crimes and crimes against children. Evelyn's been instrumental in successes of the Lamarck Police Department's back to school drives and the Blue Santa events. Uh, the department is grateful for her hard work uh that she brings to her job and for her community outreach efforts. Um, Evelyn holds a Master Peace Officer certification from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, so she's five years. Also, five years left, Philip Bush, uh Philip Bush began his employment with the City of Lamarck on February sixteenth of twenty fifteen. Uh, Mr. Bush works in our Public Works Department. Mr. Bush is an ex NASA retired engineer who loves to chat. He's married to a woman who was born in nineteen forty in Nazi Germany, so he has many interesting stories to tell. He can talk for hours about any topic, cares deeply about others and their well-being. Uh, he's been an asset to this to the city and we're happy to have him. Uh, another five years, Matthew Cypress. Uh, Matthew has been in Lamarck Police Department since May twenty sixth of twenty fifteen. He served in both the Patrol Service Division and the Criminal Investigation Division. Matthew transferred from Patrol in January of twenty eighteen to CID. Uh, Matthew has proven himself to be a dedicated detective who is truly invested in his work. In addition to his regular caseload, Matthew is also working with the FBI on some of Lamarck's cold cases. Uh, Matthew holds an advanced peace officer certification from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Also, in our Public Works Department, we have Ernest Dickey, who has been with us for five years. Ernest began employment with the city on the mark of Lamarck on May twenty fifth of twenty fifteen. Uh, for those of you that know him, you know that Ernest is something else. Uh, he's very outgoing, he will talk to a wall if he thinks it's listening and hug a tree if the tree will allow him to. He's a very kind and good person, he's an a- and an asset to the city of Lamarck. Ernest operates our jet machine, uh, so when you have a sewer backup, he's the man that comes out to respond to uh to your issues and to help you out. Also, with the Lamarck Police Department, we have Jesse Guzman at five years. Jesse first started with the City of Lamarck Police Department in November of twenty ten. He worked for Lamarck for three years before leaving to join another agency. In September of twenty fifteen, he returned to Lamarck Police Department as a parole off- uh patrol officer. Jesse serves as a patrol officer and is known for his humorous and upbeat personality. Uh, then part of the department enjoys having Jesse around to brighten the day. Jesse holds an advanced peace officer certification from the Texas Commission of Law on Law Enforcement. Also, at the PD, we have Kenneth Hernandez with five years. Kenneth was hired as a police officer on August twenty fourth of twenty fifteen, was promoted to the rank of corporal on October first of twenty nineteen, and serves as a ship shift corporal for shift B. Kenneth has served on the on the department's special response team. Corporal Hernandez is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, and it shows. His professionalism and the pride instilled in the Marine Corps is exhibited by Kenneth in everything he does. He holds an advanced peace officer certification from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Also, with five years is our librarian, Amy Miller. Amy began employment on February second of twenty fifteen. Her employee stated that Amy has been the most rewarding and enjoyable director to work for. She's created an atmosphere where everyone is encouraged to be open and share their thoughts and ideas. She values the input and opinion of her staff. It cannot be stressed enough how important these attributes have been in creating a space that lives up to the ideas of what any library, any library should be. Her employees appreciate her intelligence, encouragement, kindness, and her sense of humor. Five years in our code enforcement office, we have Michael Phillips. Michael began his career in code compliance with the City of Lamarck on August third of twenty fifteen. He's a graduate of the University of Phoenix with a bachelor's in business management. He's also an active member of the Gulf Coast Basketball Officials Association, where he has served as a division representative and board member for twenty seven years. In his leisure time, he enjoys spending time with his family, reading, playing tennis, and discussing sports. Also, at the Public Works Department, five years, we have Roy Robinson. Roy began employment with the City of Lamarck on December twenty eighth of twenty fifteen. Roy is a hard worker, always on time, and never misses a day of work. He's a valuable employee that does whatever is asked of him. He's one of the good ones, and he cares an awful lot about the people of the city of Lamarck. Getting to some that are a little bit grayer and a little bit older in their career, uh, with ten years service, we have Conan King in the Lamarck Police Department. He's been with the department since June twenty eighth of twenty twenty, or of twenty ten. Conan served as a patrol officer in the Patrol Division.
Meeting, okay.
Uh, he serves as a patrol services, he served as a patrol officer in the Patrol Services Division before transferring to the Criminal Investigation Division Identification Section. Serving as the department's crime scene investigator and evidence custodian. On October first, twenty nineteen, Conan was promoted to the rank of corporal and serves as the A ship corporal. Conan holds an advanced peace officer certification from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Also, with ten years, we have Kathleen Van Staver. Kathleen was the first city marshal for the City of Lamarck and the first female city marshal in the state of Texas, according to the Galveston Daily News. She worked to build the co-compliance division into a proactive department to better serve our citizens. She helped develop the demolition program to eliminate substandard structures that were keeping the neighborhoods unsafe and depressed and the vacant lot mowing program we still use today. In her off time, she enjoys camping, riding motorcycles, hanging out with close friends. Getting a little bit grayer and a little bit farther down the road, at fifteen years, we have Mr. Joe Moes. Joe began employment with the City of Lamarck on May tenth of two thousand and five. Joe is a great example that goes above and beyond all the rest. He sets an example of excellence for all the others around him to follow. He's the epitome of excellence in his work and in his leadership in his department. Also, at fifteen years, we have Tina Smith. Tina started her employment with the Lamarck Police Department in November of two thousand and five as a telecommunicator. In October of twenty fifteen, while serving as the telecommunicator, Tina was promoted to a dual role position, serving as the lead communic- telecommunicator and the administrative assistant to the chief of police. Tina is responsible for telecommunicator training and operations in the telecommunications station section, in addition to administrative duties to support departmental operations. Tina always has a smile on her face and her contagious laughter can be heard throughout the entire station. Also, at fifteen years, we have Harvey Walton. Harvey began his employment with the Lamarck Police Department in March of two thousand and five. Harvey served in the Patrol Division, Patrol Services Division before transferring to the Criminal Investigations Division in November of twenty fourteen. Detective Walton is charged with investigating many of the department's violent crimes. Mr. Walton holds an advanced peace officer certification from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Getting a little bit older and longer in the tooth, at twenty years, Tom Hanson. Tom began employment with the City of Lamarck on November fourth of two thousand. Having been here for just over twenty years, Tom provides a unique historical historical perspective on the library and how it has evolved through the years. Thomas from Norway, and pre-pandemic, he would sometimes leave for several weeks each year to visit his family there. It's during these periods of wait that his director and his coworkers realize how much they truly rely on him. He frequently helps other departments on creative projects such as graphics for the I forty five billboards or the cover design for our annual budget book. Tom has built a relationship with many of our customers and watched children grow up visiting the library. Now, many of those same children are coming into the library with children of their own, and they still ask for Tom by name. Tom has a great sense of humor, and it's not unusual for the director to cry her makeup off from laughing at something he said. He's a valued member of our library team, and he makes a library a joyful place to work. His director stated that she plans on him staying for twenty more years. And our longest-serving member who's receiving a service award for this year uh with twenty five years is Charlene Warren. Charlene began working for the City of Lamarck on March sixteenth of nineteen ninety five and has served the city for nearly twenty six years. She began as a police telecommunicator for the Lamarck Police Department and later served as a support staff supervisor overseeing police telecommunications and the records division. In nineteen ninety eight, she was assigned the additional responsibility of serving of serving as the administrative assistant to the chief of police. In twenty fifteen, Charlene was appointed to the as the emergency management coordinator for the city. In twenty fifteen, she also transferred to the city manager's office as assistant to the city manager, eh, uh, emergency management coordinator. During her time in the city manager's office, she's also served as the interim city manager for a period of ten months. In twenty nineteen, she was selected as one of the inaugural recipients of the City of Lamarck Certified Public Manager Program scholarships and will be be completing that program very soon. Charlene holds a wealth of knowledge about the city and its operations, and I will say she's been a tremendous asset to me during my first couple of years with the city. So that will be all of our individuals that will be receiving service awards for this year. And so now we're going to begin talking about the employee recognition awards. So the employee recognition awards that we do each year, we have four different categories. Uh, in those categories, the employees are, a- any employee is allowed to nominate an employee, a coworker, or a a director is allowed to nominate somebody that works for them, or they can nominate somebody from another department. Uh, once all those nominations are in, we have a committee that has representatives from our departments that sits down and goes through them and does the final selection for uh for those awards. Um, the first award that we're going to talk about tonight is the team player. Uh, the team player is an employee that pulls their weight, one that lends a helping hand without uh coercion and without the need for praise, someone that celebrates wins together and practices to improve the entire team. And our twenty twenty team player uh for the City of Lamarck for the year is Sloan Witter from the Fire Department. Sloan began employment with the City of Lamarck on February sixth of twenty seventeen. Sloan is an up and coming young professional who coordinates many functions for the Lamarck Fire Department. Organization-wide, she assists the Office of the Fire Chief of Budget and other assorted responsibilities to ensure they have continuous operations through making sure the equipment needed is ordered and maintenance contracts are maintained. She's always willing to lend a helping hand, never needs coercion, and she does all of this without receiving any praise. The Pride Award is the second award that we're going to give tonight. Uh, that award goes to an employee that takes pride in their work, one that believes in embracing the importance of the value of service of the service we provide to our residents, uh, someone who is not smug but proud to be a member of our team. And the winner of the Pride Award for this year is Jody Martinez. Jody began employment with the City of Lamarck on November fifteenth of twenty seventeen. Jody is the A ship captain and assigned to the Operations Division of the Lamarck Fire Department. His primary duties are ensuring his crew is prepared to respond and mitigate calls for service. Doing so, he ensures all safety gear is fitted, ordered, and maintained for each firefighter, not just for his ship personnel, but for the entire department. This is a task wherein he must ensure the gear meets industry standards and rigid higher authority mandates. This demands a lot of time, but he believes the investment is worth the return for his for his and the fire department's safety. Through his continued efforts to ensure the department stays compliant, he embraces the importance of the value of the service we provide our citizens. He daily exhibits great pride in his part in the fire department's team. The next award is the distinguished employee awards. Uh, the distinguished employee award is to recognize employees who distinguish themselves throughout the year through their service to the community, public, and or uh and to the organization through exemplary performance of their job duties on an ongoing basis. So the distinguished employee awards um are, there's there's not a maximum number that we can give. Um, uh, we, they look at the committee, looks at the nominations, and anybody who they believe fits into this category um is uh move forward for this award, and I think for this year, we have six that the committee moved forward. The first uh person uh to receive a distinguished employee award is Brendan Briggs. Brendan began began employment with the City of Lamarck on August thirty first of twenty nineteen. He's operations, an operations captain in the Lamarck Fire Department. While his primary responsibilities are overseeing a full shift of personnel, he has many secondary, the secondary duties overseeing special operations of the department. Among these are wildland coordination, liaison to the police department, special operations, and oversight of various tracking programs using the fire department's daily operations. This year, with the fire department's enhanced response to the pandemic, Brendan researched and built a sanitizing program with the equipment to reduce the risk of first responders with the city. This included setting up a decontamination tent, training personnel on procedures, and then creating portable sanitation equipment to reduce contaminants within city buildings, EMS, ambulance, and police units. Brendan strives to see the bigger picture and take care of others within our organization through research and innovation on an ongoing basis. Um, the second winner of the distinguished uh employee awards is Eustacio Gonzalez. Stacy began employment with the City of Lamarck on June sixth of twenty eleven. Stacy cares deeply about this community, tries to save every penny he can save its citizens while while managing the shop, does multiple jobs each day and never complains. He cares about everyone and wants the absolute best for the city. He's an invaluable part of our public works team. He's an invaluable part of our public works team. Um, the third employee on the, uh, list of designated employee winners is Ms. Colleen Martin. Colleen Beck began employment with the city of Lamarck on October tenth of two thousand and sixteen. Colleen understands the importance of details regarding public communications, which is why she is very effective at her job. We received innumerable comments from the public on how they enjoy reading inside the market. She does a great job at updating our website and recognizing the importance of keeping an excellent image for our city. She's always ready to help, and she is our queen of rainbow and glitters. The next distinguished employee winner is Barbara Gonzalez. Barbara began employment with the city of Lamarck on September twenty-fifth of two thousand and seventeen. Barbara is the Emergency Medical Services Administrator for the Lamarck Fire Department. Her responsibility is ensuring three medical transport units are stocked and meet all governing requirements. With the onset of the pandemic, Barbara invested many extra hours to ensure procedures were in place to respond to COVID calls for service. Track them and ensure our employees were decontaminated appropriately and that that was properly tracked. Most recently, she worked with the state and had a very large supply of personal protective equipment donated to the city. Saving tens of thousands of dollars to our citizens. Throughout the year, she goes above and beyond with a caring, hands-on approach to those who contact us for service. Um, the next of the final, uh, distinguished, uh, employee, the secret, uh, employee award goes to Roy Robinson. Roy began his employment with the city of Lamarck on December twenty-eighth of two thousand and fifteen. Roy is a hard worker as well as a team player in the public works department. He's self-motivated, takes pride in everything that he does, and works very hard for us. He does not need to be told what to do because every week he lays out his entire plan on Monday morning for everything that he needs to get done. He is truly a dependable and very trustworthy employee and a very important part of our team at the public works department. That completes the list of our distinguished, uh, award winners. The next award, we'll have two left, the next award is our customer service award. Customer service award goes to an employee that demonstrates excellence in customer service. One that demonstrates the importance of providing some, uh, superior quality service to our residents. All employees who receive a customer service excellent award at a city council meeting during the year are automatically included for consideration for this award. Plus anyone, any employee that's nominated by another employee during the nomination, uh, time. And the winner of our customer service award for two thousand and twenty is Richard Garcia. Richard began employment as a police officer with the city of Lamarck on April fourth of two thousand and four. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant in October of two thousand and ten, and he serves as a shift supervisor for D shift. Richard has been the department's firearm instructor for ten years. Richard is also the department's field training coordinator. Richard is well-known to be the department jester. He can make everyone laugh even in the most stressful moments. Richard Garcia holds a master peace officer certification for the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Um, I've personally seen him interact with our citizens and have heard nothing but positive comments from many others. He excels in the way he serves our community. And I think Mayor and I can both, uh, also add into this, he also is very good at waking somebody up at three-thirty in the morning if they don't answer their door. He will definitely get you out of bed. The final award that we have for the year, which is the big one. Um, is the employee of the year. Um, the, um, employee of the year, of course, is, is, uh, is a, is a very, uh, important designation for our employees. And it's something that everybody, uh, works for each year. Um, and our employee of the year for two thousand and twenty is Mr. Joe Moes. Joe began his employment with the city of Lamarck on May tenth of two thousand and five. Joe is a consummate professional. He's the type of person that can easily be called one of a kind. Joe has a singular approach to his work, and that is no nonsense, get things done. While our citizens sleep at night during bad weather, Mr. Joe is out there working the city, clearing drains, checking trouble spots, keeping the water moving. That significantly, significantly reducing the troubles our folks could potentially wake up to. He loves this city, and he gives our citizens a hundred and ten percent every day. Uh, he is one in a million, and I'm very proud to have been able to select him as the two, as the two thousand and twenty employee of the year. This is a well-deserved and long overdue award to a great employee and an amazing man. And that is the end of the list for our award winners for two thousand and twenty for those awards. We also have, um, two other items to discuss tonight, um, as part of this. One of those is our employees, uh, is our Certified Public Manager Program scholarships. Uh, we are going to also, uh, announce those tonight. Um, I would like to, before I start with this, I would like to thank, um, Councilwoman McCullough and Councilman Lane. Uh, for helping me with the process as we went through and, uh, looked at the applications, uh, to try to narrow them down. Um, for this year, uh, we had, um, we had a very, um. I don't even know what the appropriate, um. The appropriate, um, word would be for this, we had, uh, four, four, four scholarships to give out. Uh, we had six applicants who applied. Um, and of those, of those, um, six applicants, um, I reviewed them, and then the two council members also reviewed them. Um, looking, trying to determine who we were going to, uh, narrow it down on. And then we began having another conversation because it was so difficult. Um, to narrow down the list that we had because they were all excellent employees. They were all, um, extremely, um, talented. They're all people that we fully anticipate, uh, to continue to have a major impact. Uh, on the things that we do in the city. Um, and so, uh, the two council members asked me to look at doing something else, um, related to, um, the scholarships. And so at their request, uh, went back and looked, and we came up with a different plan. And so what we've decided is that, um, we're going to give all six of the scholarship. Um, so the six individuals that will be receiving the scholarship to participate in the Certified Public Manager Program are Amy Miller. Barbara Gonzalez, Alex Geddy, Rosemary Bell, Patty Reese, and Amanda Hoppy. Um, so I will be talking to them tomorrow. Um, we have had, the University of Houston has been very excellent to work with us and cut our costs on this by every, by when we, when we buy one. Uh, spot, they give us another one for free, uh, so we're going to work. To, um, make sure that we get all six of them to the program during this next year. And then the last thing that we have, um, on the list for tonight is, uh, the recognitions for the Keep Lamarck Beautiful Commission. Uh, employee recognitions, and this is related to our, uh, most recent cleanup, uh, the fall sweep that we had. And I think before I, I mentioned those individuals, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Bell, uh, this was something you wanted to see tonight. You want to say something before I, before I, uh, talk about them?
Uh, yeah, uh, I think I, I just wanted to, to make sure that, that they receive recognition for. Uh, going out of their schedule, going out of their day, it was on a Saturday. Uh, and they showed up, uh, at our, uh, at our city hall, uh, and they worked and they didn't complain. Uh, I don't know whether or not they were being compensated, but I do know that they eagerly, uh, showed up and they worked really hard. Uh, and that's a testament to the city staff that we are assembling. Uh, we are getting better all the time, and I just wanted to make sure that they know that this council appreciates them. And certainly encourages them in what they're trying to do to keep our city clean.
Okay, Kath, I wonder if Kathleen is on, um. So we, uh, we are going to give them all a certificate, um, tomorrow, and I. The certificates I left in my office, I'm trying to find the list here real quick so I can name off all of those that were involved is Kathleen, are you on?
Yes, sir.
Can, can you name off all the individuals who are involved in that, please, because I'm not finding my list? And I know you sent it to me in an email, I'm trying to, I was trying to look through my emails here real quick and find the email.
Uh. Hang on, I've got to find it too. Let's see.
While they're looking for that, I want to add my congratulations to all the, uh, wonderful employees and workers. Uh, scholarship award winners, I echo Mayor Pro Tim's sentiments. Uh, that, um, the commission does a great job keeping our city clean. And, uh, I know on behalf of the entire council that we honor our employees, uh, that work so hard on behalf of the citizens.
Okay, so I found them. Um, so the, the individuals that we had that, um, that participated in the cleanup. Include, uh, Stacy Gonzalez. From our public works department. Uh, we also have from public works, Tony Hurd. Uh, we also have from public works, Terry Jones. Um, another public works individual that we have, um, that was participated was Willie McNeil. Uh, we also had from, um. From public, uh, from, uh, from our code enforcement division, Lakeisha Stinson, who was out there helping out that day. We also have from our public works department, Felipe Rodriguez, who participated that day. Um, and then, of course, we also had, uh, Kathleen, who was out there helping that day as well. So those individuals will all be receiving a certificate, um, tomorrow with the rest of our, of our award winners. Uh, to show our appreciation for their efforts out there during the, during the cleanup, um, during the fall sweep. And Mayor, that's the entire list.
Thank you, sir, you did a great job. I have one thing to, uh, add since we're honoring people, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. I want to thank you, uh, during this time when Patty and I are sticking close to the house here for various reasons. Uh, for representing our city. Uh, in my stead, and, uh, Patty and I want to give you a special heartfelt thanks for the, uh. Town Hall Zoom, when you explained our situation, you did that with class, you did that with leadership. And I want you to know that we both appreciate that very much. So thank you.
I, I appreciate you, Mayor, and certainly my family, uh, myself have love for you and your family. Uh, and we want you and your lovely wife Patty, who we know very well, we want you to stay safe and healthy. Uh, because, uh, life is so much more, uh, than the current circumstances that we're in. And I was glad to do it, uh, as your partner, uh, on this journey. I was glad to do it as, as a member of this council, and I will continue to, uh, do what's necessary to heal our city. Uh, it's a difficult time, uh, but I understand and know that there's a lot of love, uh, in our community for one another. And so I'll continue to stand in the gap while you continue to do what you need to do for your wife because certainly that is your first priority. But thank you, uh, for your acknowledgement.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Tink, are we moving forward?
Yes, sir, we are.
Uh, I think Dara is, uh, we have one more speaker that came in late, uh, is that during the public hearing, or do you want to introduce her down?
Uh, so Mayor, I just wanted to, to point out that, um, Margaret Somrev is the TCAP representative. So she's here and able to speak to any questions that council has on that TCAP contract. Looks like Suzie's on as well, but I know she was having a little bit of technology issues.
Yes, ma'am, do we want to do that, uh, when the agenda item comes up, or would you like to have her speak now?
Let, let's do it when the agenda item comes up, I think we got Suzie figured out now too, so we'll do it with the agenda item, Mayor.
Great, wonderful, I, I don't think that's going to be a controversial issue, but I've been wrong before in my ten years. So item four of the minutes, A, workshop meeting minutes of November ninth, two thousand and twenty. B, regular meeting minutes of November ninth, two thousand and twenty. C, special meeting minutes of November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. D, special meeting minutes of December seventh, two thousand and twenty, I'll entertain a motion.
Omo.
I second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Item five is consent agenda, there's nothing to be pulled. Uh, item A is one item, uh, so I'll entertain a motion on that.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, show the motion passes. Item six, under public hearings, A, conduct, uh, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the time, please, I'm sorry.
It is seven oh five.
Seven oh, thank you, seven oh five, we will, uh, adjourn the regular meeting, move into the public hearings, I'll take them all. In one fell swoop here, I, uh, A, conduct public hearing to hear public input regarding adopting ordinance number. Zero dash twenty twenty dash zero zero one eight. Changing the zoning district from R one single-family residential to C one general commercial. For lots one, two, and three of the Johansson addition located at or near twenty-one oh five Gulf Freeway, Lamarck, Texas, anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Moving on to B, conduct public hearing to hear public input regarding adopting ordinance number zero dash twenty twenty dash zero zero one nine. Abandoning two portions of public right of way near Hallam Road and Delaney Road. And authorizing conveyance of said rights of way to the adjacent property owner, anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, uh, letter C, conduct public hearing to hear public input regarding adopting ordinance number zero dash twenty twenty dash zero zero twenty. Amending chapter fourteen buildings and building regulations and twenty-nine fire prevention and. Emergency services of the city code by adopting the two thousand and eighteen additions. Of the International Fire Code, Building Code, Residential Code, Property Maintenance Code. Plumbing Code, Energy Conservation Code, Mechanical Code, Fuel Gas Code. Existing Building Code, Private Sewage Disposal Code, Swimming Pool and Spa Code. And the two thousand and seventeen edition of the National Electric Code, anyone wishing to speak? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the time?
Seven oh seven.
Seven oh seven, we'll close the public hearing, enter into the regular meeting. Old Business, number seven, item A, discussion, possible action regarding adoptance, adopting ordinance number zero dash twenty twenty dash zero zero one eight. As delineated in the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
Omo.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed, show the motion passes. B, discussion, possible action, reverting, adopting ordinance number zero dash twenty twenty dash zero zero one nine. As delineated in the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
Omo.
Second.
So motion a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed, show the motion passes. Item C, discussion, possible action regarding adopting ordinance number zero dash twenty twenty dash zero zero two oh. As. As delineated in the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Approve.
Omo.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, show the motion passes. D, discussion, possible action regarding Allison County invoices for COVID-nineteen testing. In the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents, I'll entertain a motion. Well, excuse me. Yeah, I guess we do.
That's fine, Mayor. Pay your note. That's fine. Yeah, you can do it that way if there's no, yeah, you can do it that way if there's.
Yes, sir.
You can do it that way if there's a motion.
We'll call for a vote, is, is there a motion regarding this?
Uh, Mayor, I make motion that we take no action once again.
I second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, show the, show the motion passes. Eight, under new business, discussion, possible action to approve a final plat for mainland partial replat. Number one, located near six oh one Delaney Road, Lamarck, Texas, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I move that we approve the plat.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mayor, uh, if I could, can we just clarify for the record, is that a motion to approve it or to approve it with the. Condition, one, that the applicant provides updated city planning letters showing the current owner and encumbrances. And two, that applicant provide original tax certificate prior to recordation of the plat?
Then I'll rephrase my, uh, asking, my request for a motion to reflect that. Uh, are you still a first and a second? asking my request for a motion to reflect that. Uh, are you still first and a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show the motion passes. Item B, discussion possible action regarding adopting ordinance number zero dash twenty twenty dash zero zero two one, changing the zoning district for property at or near seven fourteen Bio Road. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. I move that we approve.
There's motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show the motion passes. I have C, discussion possible action regarding adopting resolution number R dash twenty twenty dash zero zero two three, TCAP's professional services agreement and JEXA, G E X A, Energy's commercial electric service agreement for power to be provided on and after January first, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion. Am I muted?
No, you're not. You're not muted. I guess if if you guys want some additional discussion first, we we do have the representative on now and we have Suzie on now.
Yeah, we have the rep and Suzie. So does anyone need any further clarification on our electric service agreement?
I I mean, I think is, no, I don't.
Well, well, the the thing is, I I guess, I guess it's we're going from the opportunity to lock in fixed rates to this idea that 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 this will be uh a variable rate. And yes, we will, we will perhaps benefit from the competitive bidding process. Uh, and that might keep our rates low, but then again, uh, the industry might might cause this to uh go over and above uh the fixed rate that that we love so near and dear. So I think there's just a little hesitancy. Um, certainly, uh, I I would support it. I just I just wanted personally to see uh information from other cities that would uh suggest that this program is is a program that that, you know, we feel like we can trust to deliver for. But it's not a no. It's I think for me, it's just a little apprehension.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Protem and Council understand that. And since uh Ms. Margaret has taken the time to come on our Zoom with us and she's the representative, uh, I'd like, Dara, for you to introduce her at this time and maybe she can clarify.
Yes, sir. Um, so Margaret is the TCAP representative. Margaret, maybe you could give counsel just a little bit of detail about um what this contract does and the potential benefits.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I appreciate you giving me a time uh to talk to you about this. It is a very different way of doing things. Um, as you know, in the past, we've typically had a five-year fixed contract. And about five years ago, we started seeing a trend in the market where prices were at their lowest for a one-year contract two years in advance. And um about five years ago is when we brought your current contract to you and we thought, well, it's probably just an anomaly in the in the market, but we'll watch it. Well, it's been consistent um over the last five years. And so this new way of procuring is is that we're going to go out on monthly basis for RFPs, go out into the wholesale market, which we um know that they're going to fight even harder to get our business. And we think that's going to keep prices low, as well as when you go out for longer-term contracts, because the market doesn't know what those out years are going to be, years three, four, and five, they add price premiums into the contract um because they just don't know. Typically, that just becomes profit in those companies' pockets. And so by doing it this way, we'll also be avoiding those price premiums, um again, saving the city additional money. The other thing it does is that if the market changes for the better, which this happened in our last contract, not the one you're in right now, um fracking happened and we were in a five-year fixed contract and we couldn't take advantage of the prices um, you know, dropping significantly by more than half because we were locked into a contract. Under this new procurement method, we'll be able to take advantage of the market if new technology comes on board. We think um batteries are the next new thing, being able to store the wind and solar to use at longer uh timeframes. Um, and so we'll be able to take advantage of that. On the flip side, because TCAP is in the business of making sure that we save our members' money, um, if for some reason that um pattern that has been in the market flips on its head and it's no longer there, we will be the first to come back to you and say, we're locking you into a fixed contract. We're not doing this anymore. The other thing is, is that under this process, you're going to have more pricing information coming from us than you've ever had before. We will be getting um actual five-year contract prices um for uh January twenty-three through uh twenty-eight. Um, so you will be able to have that as a benchmark to be able to look at every year to say, yes, we're saving this much more money than if we'd been under that five-year contract. And again, it is going to change yearly, but you're going to know your prices in March of the previous year. So you'll know what the price is for the year prior to your budget sessions.
Hi, Margaret. Uh, my name is Casey. I have a question for you, something that um uh came up, especially when I was looking over TCAP's website over this past week. You mentioned wind and solar and the capacity for storage and everything I'm reading it does seem to affirm the idea that, you know, Texas has a pretty steady growth in that arena and a lot of potential. How does that fit into this model when you go out to if when you go out to buy the energy? Will that be one of the sources? Or is it all um fossil fuel derived?
And no, right now, um, you know, the 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 Texas grid is changing. There is a lot more solar and wind on the grid than there used to be. The coal plants are shutting down. Um, the other thing is, like, right now, your contract is probably um with uh even though you're billed through JEXA and even though we're going to be going out for monthly RFPs, you will continue to be billed by JEXA through this whole process. Um, we're able to go out into the wholesale market, so no matter who the wholesaler is, JEXA is our billing partner only. So rates can change, even though the JEXA will stay the same. Um, and because we're able to go out into the wholesale market, right now, our provider is Nex oh, sorry, isn't Nextera. And they um provide about eighty percent of their energy in Texas through wind and solar. The other thing that we're also going to do as part of this contract is we're going to buy, um, because it's going to be such a low-cost um renewable energy credits, which will allow the city to say that they're a hundred percent green um without um the struggles of actually trying to buy wind and solar only. Um, because there are times the wind doesn't blow and the sun doesn't shine and you need power. And we're also seeing right now, even in the ERCOT grid, that there's these little um windows where there's not wind or solar. And um it has to be backfilled um with something, which typically is natural gas in Texas.
So our billing partner will be JEXA.
JEXA.
And they're forgive my naivete. It's a it's a whole big learning curve with this one. Um, but so part of TCAP's whole, like, approach is to, it's basically to get energy from all the sources, to buy
Yes.
all the sources. This new agreement is not changing the the origination of, is not changing any of the sources that we deal with. It's just changing the nature of how we are billed based on the production of energy across the state.
No, actually, um, the billing will stay the same. Um, what makes us different? Um, let me kind of put it this way. When you go out and buy energy for your home, you have to call a retail electric provider. And that's either JEXA or TXU or Reliant, or you have to call them. If for some reason you're not happy with them, then you have to change companies and you have to switch and you have to get a whole new company. And, you know, the price that you had under one company, you may not be able to get the same price or the same contract language, you know. Because TCAP is a nonprofit political subdivision corporation, we are able to go into the wholesale market and buy our power. So our wholesalers under this process will change. Um, but you won't see that because we only use JEXA for billing. So JEXA has agreed that they will take, no matter who we tell them to, to bill you. So through this whole process, your JEXA bills will remain the same, but it's how the power behind it is getting to you that's going to change uh every year.
And it changes year to year because, like
We're only buying one-year contracts instead of a five-year contract.
Okay.
And we're just going to roll it forward for five years.
Phew.
And right now, just to let you know, of the hundred and sixty-six cities that, or I shouldn't say cities, a hundred and sixty-six members that we have throughout um TCAP, a hundred and fifty-four of them have all signed on for S H P. The other remaining cities um are going to just get the five-year fixed contract.
So, uh, Margaret, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so is there any way that we might be able to look at at other cities that are uh comparative uh to to our city uh who have been using this program uh so that we could see what their savings look like, so we could see what their fluctuations look like? Um, I think that it it would help me personally and maybe other council members if if we had other information that we might be able to look at as relates to how cities are fair. There's a lot of information in our packets about your program and how it works uh and language in the agreement. But I don't know that I saw anything uh as relates to how you all have benefited specific cities in their billing and how much you've saved them. That would help me tremendously.
Well, I wish I could give you that information, but the one thing about this program is we're very excited about. We're the first um organization that we know that is doing this program. So it is a brand-new program. So we don't have actual savings um for other cities that have done this program. However, we did go back and we looked at, okay, we had actual prices, you know, one-year prices. We looked back and thought, okay, if we'd been doing this since twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen instead of the five-year contract, what would the savings have been for our members? And for example, the city of Lamarck in twenty eighteen, you would have saved about nineteen hundred dollars. In twenty nineteen, you would have saved fifty-eight hundred dollars. And in twenty twenty, you would have saved almost six thousand dollars. Again, and that's not even going out for the real RFPs and having the companies fight to get our business. Um, that is really just getting rid of those um price premiums in longer-term contracts and being able to take advantage of the market. Um, your current price right now is three, five, six, seven. And going back, prices dipped down to three point four cents in this contract term. Um, again, you're locked in, couldn't take advantage of that three point four cent contract rate. And so that's what this is um going to be able to do is that when those market dips a little bit, you know, we'll be able to take advantage of it to try and find additional savings for you.
Is there any possibility that the market may go the other way or in the other direction and we might expend more for for you uh the utility than than save?
We don't think so at this point. Again, we do have an energy consultant that watches the market um on um that we use. Um, and he is going to be the first one to come back and say, you know, we got to change. This isn't working. Um, you know, for example, last spring, he told the TCAP Board of Directors, pray for a mild summer because if we don't have a mild summer, now, mind you, the rates were really good for, I mean, the rates didn't change for us. But for example, he's like, pray for a mild summer because if we don't have one, the ERCOT margin is gonna um be depleted and rates are going to go up. And if you saw in August of twenty nineteen, um, there were headlines about prices going up to nine dollars a kilowatt. Um, and and it did. Um, for people that buy what's called spot market prices, the price did go up to nine dollars um a kilowatt. Did not affect us because we have that fixed contract. Um, but again, he was giving the board um a heads-up in the spring. And so he already saw that coming down the pike. Again, if he sees something um that's coming down the pike that does not look favorable, he'll be the first to come back to the board and tell the board we need to lock it in. I can tell you um that um one of the things that, you know, as we've talked to members, actually, uh the city of Lake Jackson, when we talked to them, they they have signed up for this program. One of the things that they thought about doing just to make it even in their budget was taking that five-year price and just budgeting it for five years and then banking the savings to give more of that budget stability. I don't know if that's what they're going to end up doing, but that was the first city that we had talked to that had suggested that they might do that. So there wasn't the huge, not huge, but the um the differences in the years, the variable rates through the five-year plan. Um, and they were just going to bank whatever savings they had and use that for projects.
Uh, Margaret, how does this how does this play into the question of whether the city down the road wanted to invest more in solar and wind energy and buy more from solar and wind?
Um, well, one of the, you know, like I said, we're going to be doing um the renewable energy credits. If the city itself wanted to do solar um and put that on rooftops, um, like I, we have a consultant that can help you do that, um, review any contracts that you may have. Um, we've seen some really bad contracts out there that could actually hurt cities more than help them. Um, of course, for cities um to save money doing solar, again, it would need to be rooftop behind the meter because what isn't going down are your transmission and distribution charges. Um, and those just keep going up. They keep getting rate increases. And so um unfortunately, there's the only way you can help those go down is through different demand response programs. Um, and we do have all of that information. And one of the things, after we kind of get all this wrapped up, is we're coming back to our members in um the spring of next year to talk about all the different ways of saving either the the demand response programs that are available or energy efficiency or just any way you can save money. Because at the end of the day, we know that you all are looking for ways to save money in your budgets with everything else that's getting piled on top of you with property tax limits and and everything else. And and this year, if and I don't know, but if your sales tax are down because of COVID, so, you know, we're trying to continually find ways to help you all save money.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, council, if you have more questions, we can consider a table. If you're happy, we can go ahead and entertain a motion to uh approve this.
I I think I think, Mayor, that that the the lack of a a uh uh motion and a second probably uh speaks more to just our unfamiliarity with with this program. And I think that we probably need more more information uh and a little more time to visit uh about it. This is a pretty big decision uh for a meeting on a December night. So so maybe if if we get more information from from Ms. Margaret uh and have more time to speak with Tink and Ms. Margaret and and uh 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 Ms. Coop, we might be a little better, a little more knowledgeable uh we might be a little better, a little more knowledgeable at the next meeting.
I agree, and I don't believe this is time-sensitive. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to table.
Timeout. It is a little time-sensitive. Actually, we are, and I'm not forcing you, I'm sure we can work something out. I just kind of need some information. We are actually starting our RFP process in January. So our deadline, our hard deadline is December 31st. I'm sure you don't have another council meeting before December 31st. If you can tell me when this would come back, when your next council meeting is, I can talk to the powers-to-be and kind of see how we can kind of fit you in there since we're past the December 31st deadline. You're our last remaining city that's considering this issue. So I just need to know when that next meeting would be.
Yes, ma'am. It's the second Monday in January.
January 11th.
Okay. I think we can make that work. Like I said, I just needed to know that. And I'll talk to everybody on my side. And then if Suzie wants to follow up with me on any additional information we need to pull together, we can do that.
Thank you so much for your time this evening and for your forbearance. And we will get back to you and put this on our agenda for the 11th and hold our spot until then, if you can.
I can do that, I think.
Yes, ma'am. And so there's, I believe we have a motion to table. Did we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. There's no discussion on the table. I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Any opposed? Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Show the motion passes. Item D, discussion possible action regarding approval of diversity slash inclusive promotion language for use in city contracts and procurement documents. Casey, I'm going to have you make this motion so you can include what you'd like to see.
Well. I move that we approve the promotion of diversity slash inclusivity promotion language in our city contracts and agreements.
Would you say that your motion would be to approve the language that we have by adding an inclusion after the word diversity every place where it's at?
That was the language you needed me to say.
Yes, slash inclusive. Thank you very much. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Any opposed? Show the motion passes unanimously, as they all have. Item E, discussion possible action regarding accepting the resignation and retirement of Municipal Judge Baker and authorizing the city manager to post a request for qualifications to fill the position as needed. Mayor Protem, do you want to make this motion with comments that you would like to include?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignation and retirement of Municipal Court Judge Stephen Baker and that we also authorize the city manager to, if need be, immediately fill an interim Municipal Court Judge so that we can continue the business of the court as well as receive approval from this council for salary compensation and process of recruitment and hiring of our new Municipal Court Judge.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Show the motion passes. Item nine is appointments. I'd like to go first, if I can, and you'll see my reasoning in just a moment. My first appointment, I'd like to reappoint the entire Terrace Board for the upcoming term. My second, Harold Augustus to the Board of Adjustment is a reappointment. Reappointment of Trina Phillips to Building and Standards. Reappointment of Terry Pettijohn to Keep Lamarck Beautiful. And the reason for my going first, I'm sad to report and on behalf of the council, offer our condolences to the family of CJ Leggett, who passed away a couple of days ago, a Parks Board member. And to take that seat, I'm appointing Tanya Griffin, who has an application in. And then six is to reappoint Hugh Cash to Planning and Zoning. And once again, our condolences to the family of CJ Leggett. And I'll open the floor for other appointments, and we'll take them all as one.
I would like to reappoint Chris Colombo to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have two appointments I'd like to make. I'd like to appoint Richard Loftus of 309 Johnson Street to the Keep Lamarck Beautiful Commission as well as Delon Delifa of 232 Edgar as the alternate to the Building Standards Commission.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes. Sorry, let me find you guys again. It is my privilege and an absolute pleasure to appoint Ms. Tracy Steens to the EDC. And I want to offer my sincere thanks to Mr. McGaffey for his longtime service in so many areas of the city. And I look forward to seeing him continue to serve on the Parks Board. And I heartily welcome Ms. Tracy Steens of 708 Amato. She is hardworking and passionate about the city. And as a small business owner who has proven in the time I've known her, since first meeting her on the Juneteenth Committee a few years ago, that her dedication to the city knows no bounds. And I'm so grateful and I welcome her. I'm just so happy to have her.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mayor, I also have one. I would like to reappoint Samuel Swain to the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any end-of-the-year appointments or reappointments? So we'll consider these appointments. The motion, I'll entertain a second on all of the appointments and reappointments just made.
Second.
There is a second. No discussion on appointments. I'll call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Show the motion passes unanimously. We have no executive session, requests and announcements. I have one announcement. We will meet again at 6:00 PM on Wednesday for a very short meeting because I know Mayor Protem needs to scoot pretty quick. And we will have the great honor of welcoming Joe Compey on as the newest councilperson for District B. And it would be my great honor to swear him in that evening. And so I would open the floor to any other requests and announcements.
Yeah, Mayor, I have one request and a few congratulations. The one request I have would be, Tink, if you would, could you assess where we stand as it relates to this COVID crisis and provide for us criteria that we would be able to review so that we can give a timetable for when we will reopen City Hall? That has been the topic of discussion for several people. And so I'm requesting that you kind of put some numbers together so the people will understand the conditions that we face as well as how we are going to go about making the decision to reopen. I'd love for you to do that. And I'd love for you to disseminate that information throughout our city on every platform that we have so that we can bring some clarity to what we're doing as it relates to our response to COVID-19. And then perhaps bring that back to the council in January so that we can accept that criteria. Because people are wanting to know what the next phase of this looks like for them, which means they want to know what it looks like for us. So if you could do that for me, I appreciate it. I'd also, Mayor, I'd like to congratulate and wish Judge Stephen Baker well. He has been with us for 34 years, 34 years. That's a tremendous time for any person to dedicate to our municipality. He has been definitely attentive to our needs, focused on the city of Lamarck. And we thank him for those 34 years and wish him well in his retirement. I am delighted and excited about all of the recognition that our employees received on tonight. I'd like to congratulate each and every one of them, whether they received service tendings or they received a scholarship or they received like Joe Employee of the Year, or whether they were those folks that came out on a Saturday to help with the movement that keeps our city beautiful and keeps our city clean. The employees are the backbone of our city government. They are special to all of this council. And we want to extend well wishes to them. I certainly thank them for everything that they've done for the city. And I'm excited about what they're going to do in 2021. Now, lastly, Mayor, last. Certainly, it has been a rough week in our city. And many of our constituents are hurting. I said the other day that this is a tragedy. It still remains just that, that this family of this young man is suffering. The community in which we live, every member of this great city, no matter where you are, no matter what walk of life you come from, no matter who you are, certainly all of us are hurting. And we all realize that this is a tragedy. Many of our law enforcement officials, our police officers are hurting because no one wants this to happen anywhere at any time. But certainly, no one wanted this to happen in our city, whether they serve and protect us, many of them on the police department, whether they are citizens who happen to live in our great city. None of us wanted that. We all recognize it's a tragedy, and we all recognize that this is a rough road ahead. We are asking, I am asking, that we trust the process, that we trust that law and order will prevail and that the rule of law will prevail. But I want to remind us that this part of the process is in the hands of the Galveston Sheriff's Office as well as the Galveston County District Attorney's Office. It is in their hands. They are investigating, which means we have no way to affect or impact this investigation. But I also want people to understand that there will be a time that this process returns back to the city of Lamarck. There will be a time for us to ask ourselves several questions. There will be a time for us to turn the mirror upon ourselves that we might see if, in fact, there are areas that we might improve as a community and that we might improve while serving our community. That time is not this time. This time, we remain hopeful. And we also remain attentive to this family and this community that certainly needs our love and our attention. I'm asking that we all remain calm because our remaining calm is the key to safety for all of us. I'll say it one more time. Our ability to remain calm is the key to safety for all of our citizens, no matter where they are, no matter what condition they find themselves in. Merry Christmas to all of you. Certainly, we thank God for our ability to lead you and share with you in this time. I think that's all I have, Mayor. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. And I wholeheartedly concur with everything you've said. Once again, I appreciate your leadership in my absence. And I just think that if we all take time to reflect and to pray and to give our thoughts to all involved and let the process play out, we will be better served for it. And that's everyone. That's friends, that's family, that's us as leaders, that's all of us. And once again, thank you for your leadership and thank this council. This council has shown great leadership throughout all of this. And I'm not privy to any information that's out there. I've been secluded. I know really nothing except what I've heard and what I've read. And Casey, you look like you're poised to say something. And I must add, you look quite the council lady tonight, almost like a teacher.
Oh, yeah, it's the pearls, definitely. My husband calls this my Riddler jacket. So channeling a little bit of a comic book villain and a teacher at the same time. But I just had a few closing thoughts more than I usually do. But first, I felt moved to specifically thank Chris, our fellow councilman. I know we'll meet again in two days very briefly. And so I wanted to take the opportunity today to look at his adorable picture on the screen and tell him how deeply grateful I am for his friendship and his insight in the time I've been on this council. And Chris, you will be deeply missed. And I heartily welcome Joe Compey, and I look forward to all the good that we'll all do together. But you will very much be missed, and I want you to know that, even though I haven't seen your face on these videos in months. And I will never let you forget it. I wanted to echo Mayor Protem's sentiment about how incredibly grateful I feel to our city staff, every single one of you. It's just, I'm impressed on a daily basis of what a number of really good eggs we have working for this city. We're really, really lucky. Everyone who's on this call, to the people who aren't on this call. It's, I mean, a city is only as good as the people who are paid to represent it and do the work that, if that work didn't happen, what is the city? What, you know, if those services don't get accomplished, if people aren't, if their needs aren't met, and if people aren't trying on a daily basis to do their very best on behalf of that municipality. I'm so glad to have such faith in our staff. And I'm really, really thankful to everybody. Thank you so much for the good work you do. It's a real pleasure, and it makes this elected office all the better. So, thank you. I wanted to say also Merry Christmas and also Happy Hanukkah to anyone who's celebrating Hanukkah. I know we're in the middle of that celebration. And lastly, I also wanted to share my brief thoughts regarding the recent death of Joshua Feast. I am deeply sorry for his death, and I feel immense grief and outrage on behalf of his mother, Keisha. And I have, having, I mean, it is, her pain is incomprehensible, I think, to anyone and everyone. But it definitely is all the more so now that I am a mother myself. And I wanted to promise the people of this city that this council will be vigilant. We will hold ourselves accountable. And we will hold the staff that I just spoke of of how grateful we are accountable as well, because that's our job, all of us, is to be held accountable to the people that we represent, to the people of this community. We will listen, we will ask the questions, we will listen and listen and act. And just as Keith said, remain calm and try to keep as clear-headed as we can. And because I, for me personally, I have never felt the dual nature of this office more, the privilege that it is to serve and to represent people. The privilege that it is to serve and to represent people paired with the burden that it is to take on tragedy like this as your own and to look it in the face and to make sure that I am doing and that this council is doing everything we can to make sure that this city is accountable to every single person, every single staff member, every single resident, every single, every single person. And, uh, I want to thank everyone for the work they're doing in the city and in the county to bring us closer to resolution and to help us figure things out. And, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Uh, I will say that, uh, I'd like to thank also City Manager Tink Jackson for his steadfastness and, uh, sticking, sticking to the facts and, and being, uh, a leader in his own right. And I'll also say that at least Chris has, has, has graduated from the red CL to an actual picture. So that's, that's, he's come a long way. So Chris, thank you for serving, my friend.
Oh, it's been an honor, Mayor. It really has been.
And, uh, I understand that you, you have been, uh, uh, a great voice of wisdom in the last few days. And we want you to know that we appreciate your service and we appreciate you, uh, as a human being, as a person, very, very much. And you have a lot of upside, young man, and you're, you're going a long way. And I can't wait to see where God takes you.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Uh, Chris, I'd like to thank you for all your service and we will be seeing you around. I'd like to thank Judge Baker and in this time of Christmas that we remember what Christmas is about and also offer our prayers to the families who, of the sick and families who have lost loved ones. Uh, those are tough times during these holidays. And, uh, thank you to all the staff and to you, Tink. It's been a rather tough year, but, uh, we've kind of made it through it. And Merry Christmas to every one of you.
Thank you so much. Uh, once again, we'll see you guys, uh, on Wednesday promptly at 6:00 PM, uh, to swear in our new, newest council member. And until then, I move adjournment.
Just a move.
A second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
That was a resounding, uh, thank you, guys. We'll see you later. God bless.